Good morning. I will call to order the May 16, 2024 Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Gary Schmidt, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today. County Council, Stephen Madcor. Clerk to the Board, Acting Clerk today, Everett Wild. Commissioners West and Savis are at other county events today doing county business and will not be at the meeting. Roll call. Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in testifying, we will prompt you how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would remind all participants, all staff, elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Order will be followed in this meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. A special note to Commissioner Mark Scholl. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Mark.
You young guy, you. Gary, can you introduce the first item?
Yes, Chair. First is the Consent Agenda. Everett, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Consent Agenda. Elected officials. Item one, approval of previous business meeting minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Item two, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Corrections for supplemental Measure 57 funding for community corrections programs. Agreement value is $712,500 over two years. Funding is through the Oregon Department of Corrections. No county general funds are involved. That's for the sheriff. Item three, approval of grant agreement from the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission for Oregon Behavioral Health Deflection Program. Grant value is $475,254 for 15 months. Funding is through Oregon House Bill 4002. No county general funds are involved. That's under the District Attorney. Under Juvenile, item one, approval to apply for the congressionally-directed spending award to fund Clackamas School-Based Behavioral Health and Substance Abuse Juvenile Justice Prevention Program. Grant value is $500,000 over four years. Funding is through the Federal Burn Discretionary Grant Program. No county general funds are involved. Under County Administration, item one, approval of a fiscal year 2425 Work and Financial Plan with the U.S. Department of Agriculture for Wildlife Management Services. Agreement value is $88,733 for one year. Funding is through budgeted county general funds. Under Finance, item one, approval of a lease amendment number three with Willamette Building Partnership RC for the Willamette Building. Amendment value is $146,290 for 18 months. Total lease value is increased to $588,514 for six years and six months. Funding is through federal, state, and local grants, fee-for-service revenue, and allocated costs, which includes a small portion of budgeted county general funds. Item two, approval of lease amendment number two for the use of county buildings with the Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District. Amendment value is $104,669 for three years. Total lease value is increased to $234,265 for seven years. Funding is through budgeted Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District property tax revenue. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of lease amendment number three with RC Enterprises LLC for the Oak Lodge Library. Amendment value is $111,943 for 14 months. Total lease value is increased to $1,971,679 for 25 years and two months. Funding is through budgeted Clackamas County Library Service District property tax revenue. No county general funds are involved. Item four, approval of a parking lot lease agreement with Eddington Properties LLC for nine parking spaces at the 713 Main Street Parking Lot in Oregon City. Total lease value is for $14,625 for one year. Funding is through allocated costs, which includes a small portion of budgeted county general funds. Under Transportation and Development, item one, approval of a grant agreement with the Federal Highway Administration for the purposes of planning and community involvement associated with the Transportation Safety Action Plan. Total value is $413,905 for two years and five months. Funding is through Federal Highway Administration and $83,905 in County Road Fund match. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of a maintenance assistance grant if intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon State Marine Board for operation and maintenance funding for five county recreational boating access sites. Total value is $71,135 over two years. Funding through Oregon State Marine Board. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of a public improvement contract with Eagle Elsner Incorporated for the South Ivy Street Pedestrian Intersection Improvements Project. Total value is $3,658 over two years and eight months. Funding through state-funded local project program, the City of Canby, and County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, item one, approval of amendment number three increasing funding and duration of a revenue intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Human Services for Medicare outreach services for older adults. Amendment value is $19,500 for one year. Agreement value is increased to $100,500 for five years. Funding is through the Federal Administration of Community Living. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of amendment number one to a grant agreement with North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District for ongoing delivery of Older Americans Act-funded senior services. Amendment value is $23,530. Grant value is increased to $453,988 for one year. Funding is through federal and state grant funds. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of amendment number two, increasing funding of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Portland to access and use the Homeless Management Information System. Amendment value is $40,000 for one year. Agreement value is increased to $190,000 for five years. Funding is through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. No county general funds are involved. Item four, approval of a hotel motel services contract with YKC Hospitality LLC for 25 on-call hotel rooms for temporary housing. Contract value is $1,247,500 for one year. Funding is through Metro Supportive Housing Services Measure Funds. No county general funds are involved. Item five, approval of amendment number one, updating the scope of a revenue lease agreement with Genoa Healthcare LLC for space at the Lake Road Health Center. There is no cost associated with this amendment. Agreement value remains $46,290 for three years and three months. Funding is through Genoa Healthcare LLC. No county general funds are involved. Item six, approval of a revenue intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for participation in the alternative payment methodology and advanced care model program. Estimated total value is $9,600 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Item seven, approval of a personal services contract with Mercy Housing Northwest for property management, resident services, and supportive housing case management for Mercy Greenbrier Affordable Housing Property Residence. Contract value is $580,000 for one year. Funding is through Metro Supportive Housing Services Measure Funds. No county general funds are involved. Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you very much. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything from this consent agenda? I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Seconded.
Commissioner Schrader has moved we approve the consent agenda, and Commissioner Scholl has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Clerk, please take the poll.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. Thank you much. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District Board of Directors. Gary.
This is the Consent Agenda for the Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District. Everett, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District Consent Agenda. One item, approval of a lease amendment number two for the use of county buildings with Clackamas County. Amendment value is $104,669 for three years. Total lease value is increased to $234,265 for seven years. Funding is through budgeted Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District property tax revenue. No county general funds are involved. Chair, that is the entire consent agenda.
Does any Commissioner, excuse me, Director wish to remove this from the consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda.
Excuse me. Second.
Sorry, that's wrong. You're on the Clackamas County 4-H and Extension.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay. I move for approval of the Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District Consent Agenda.
Second. Commissioner Scholl has moved for approval of the Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Would the clerk please call the poll?
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as the Clackamas County Extension and 4-H Service District Board and convene as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board of Directors. Gary.
This is the Consent Agenda for the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. Everett, would you please read the Consent Agenda?
North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda. One item, approval of amendment number one to a grant agreement with Clackamas County for ongoing delivery of Older Americans Act-funded senior services. Amendment value is $23,530. Grant value is increased to $453,988 for one year. Funding is through federal and state grant funds. No county general funds are involved. Chair, that's the consent agenda.
Thank you. Does any Director wish to remove an item off of this consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll try it again. I move for approval of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Consent Agenda.
I will second that.
Commissioner Scholl has moved for approval of the North Clackamas, excuse me, Director Scholl has moved for approval of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation Consent Agenda, and Director Schrader has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please take the poll?
Director Schrader.
Aye.
Director Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. We are already at public communication. Would the clerk please pick up the blue cards? A portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of our consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon Revice Statutes and County Code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be kept as part of the public record. I will now open the meeting for public testimony, and I will take in-person testimony first. I have one blue card. That is Les Poole. Please come forward. State your name and your area of residence.
Good morning, Les Poole. If there's only one blue card here, you can bet it's mine. I come frequently, and I've lived in the county for over 30 years. Want to touch on a couple of things. One is, I see the three Commissioners that are here today are all on the ballot, and I just wish you well. Running for office is really tough, and, you know, sometimes I think back when I frankly was going to run and COVID hit and some things happened in my life and I couldn't, and maybe I got off lucky.
Yes, you were lucky. I'll just say that.
Yeah, I would have been right there in time for the COVID shutdown. Instead, Commissioner Scholl was the one that walked into that mess, and the fires, and all the other disasters. So it's been a troubling and challenging time, and quite frankly, as someone that's here on a regular basis, I've seen considerable progress and good work in the last year especially. You folks have had to deal with Project Turnkey and all of the homeless turmoil, and I think you're on a good path. I want to thank everyone that joined, the citizens frankly, and other communities in opposing the tolling scheme. And yesterday, I posted a brief commentary and some photos about the Abernathy Bridge on our Clackamas Live page, and I encourage folks to go take a look at that. The tolling is on hold, but the cost for what needs to be done isn't, and you can bet that that will be back. They've gone ahead and refiled the tolling petition. There's plenty of time to get it on the ballot so there's a public vote before they implement this onerous plan. And to be clear, tolling to pay for infrastructure is one thing. Charging you and I to drive on paid-for roads is completely another. And that second option is what ODOT is pursuing. They have the authority from the federal government for a pilot project, which simply means they're going to set up a small section of tolling. Of course, they've chosen the choke point out here at Stafford, and operate that for two years. After two years, they can apply to the federal government to make that permanent. But if there's an election required, I can assure you that even the folks in Portland will send this thing to its final grave. So let's stay after that. The last thing I want to mention is a little quick touch on Measure 110, a fiasco you've had to deal with. I recall a few years ago, before it was passed, a couple of nice ladies came in. I think one was from Oregon Health Sciences, but regardless, my comments aren't about them. They presented the glowing review of how Measure 110 would work, and I looked at the timing and I looked at what was going on, and I saw Measure 110 as a rating of the police budget, in a way. I didn't really see it as simply, well, let's take more money and put it into treatment. I looked at it as, well, we'll defund those bad nasty police, and we'll go about things in a different manner. And unfortunately, Measure 110 went too far, and it created a lot of problems. And I know that Measure 109, its companion, is on the agenda, I'll say that, and that's the, what do you do about distribution and retail sales, et cetera, with psilocybin? So I'll conclude by saying, maybe I was lucky I didn't run, because now you're in the medical distribution business in a way, and it's a hat that I don't think you should be forced to wear. So best to all of you, and I encourage folks to come on down after the election and ask questions, expect answers, and give feedback. You'd be surprised, folks, how far it can sometimes go. Thanks again.
Great. Thank you very much for coming forward. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to testify today? Seeing no one. Everett, is there anyone online who would like to testify?
Chair Smith, I do not have anyone online today.
I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting and move on. Gary Schmidt, you're up.
Next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I'd like to recognize our staff for their great work that they do every day. Today, I'd like to acknowledge our road crews within the Department of Transportation and Development who help fix potholes. We've talked about this before. They do it, and they do it fast. Within seven days, did you know that? Seven days from when a complaint is filed or a notice of a pothole, and our staff confirms it, they fix it in seven days. Most recently, there was a report of a pothole on Southeast 78th Avenue, which is unincorporated Clackamas County, near Multnomah County's border. And a resident wrote in, "I wanted to thank the road crew who came out yesterday and patched all the potholes on Southeast 78th Avenue. The crew is friendly and took the extra time to do a good job. Keep up the great work." Our county website at clackamas.us/transportation/roadconcern is a place where people can report potholes. And again, our staff will fix them within seven days after confirmation that there's an issue. So congratulations to our road crew staff who helped deliver outstanding service for the public. That is my update for today. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much for that. That's just great news. I called the pothole hotline, and yeah, they fixed it. They're also doing some patching work, as I've noticed, on the road that I drive in on. It's very nice. Now we are at Commissioner Communication. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Well, just when we talk about potholes, I always think that potholes aren't partisan. And I wish, when I did my voter's pamphlet statement, I would have taken credit for the potholes.
Oh, for the potholes, okay.
Potholes aren't partisan, but in Clackamas County, we have our priorities straight because we really are on the ground making work happen. In any case, I had a busy week this week, Chair. I joined you at the Courthouse Arts Committee. I think we already mentioned it Wednesday, but I was hopeful you could fill people in on the artwork that we have chosen for that. It's going to be a beautiful building, and it's going to have beautiful artwork in it. And Clackamas County deserves to have a building where our citizens feel safe, where justice is served, and being able to know that we are prioritizing public safety in a way that is really been fantastic. We do have to realize that the courthouse downtown will be working, I hope, Chair, with Oregon City and some of the businesses down there to see what's going to happen to that building. I know I've had some conversations about that, but I think all of us are going to be looking forward into August of 2025, when our judges move in, when our, I believe our District Attorney as well is going to be in that building, and we will be able to really stop the backlogs in our public justice system that happen, because we don't have adequate space or the ability to get people through the system as quickly as we should. So I'm really grateful for that. The other thing that I did today, this week, was I had a great time. I went to the Optimist Club in Oregon City, and I had a lot of different things I could have talked about, but I did have all of our work that we've done on housing. And every time I look at that report and what we've done and how well that we have integrated as a team, the housing capacity, the sticks and bricks with the wraparound services, that really is the reason why I think that we have been so successful in reducing homelessness in Clackamas County. Again, it's a nonpartisan issue. We want to help our people recover. We want to get them healthy. We want to get them off the streets, and we want to get them in housing. And the Optimist Club was really happy to hear the progress that we've made there.
Good.
That was pretty, pretty cool. And then I had an interesting meeting with Rick Soen, and he is, and so I'm going to give some materials, get them to you, Commissioner Scholl, because you are our forestry point person. But it's a group called Friends of Forest Bridges, and this is a group that really has brought together all elements. They've actually come up with a collaborative. They're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and from a spectrum of viewpoints. So conservation, the timber forestry industry, recreation, and wildlife. They are not, what you might say, are the left-left wing. It's really more of a moderate, middle-of-the-road group that's trying to bridge the, and partner with the tribal nations nonprofits, scientists, governments, businesses, the public, and of course, largely the ONC counties. And he is a timber person himself. His family has been in the timber business for at least, I'd say, 100 years or so. I mean, he's kind of last of a long line. So, yeah, so I will get this, I will get this to you, because they're about to think about getting, developing legislative concepts and working with the ONC counties. And Mr. Soen knows all of our ONC, you know, Tim Freeman and Doug Roberts and all those guys that you get to hang out with on a regular basis. So tell him I say hi when you see him again, okay? All right, and I'll get this information to you. Okay, final thing, I believe. Oh, I also attended the Clackamas Community College Rise Up Luncheon yesterday. It was a fundraiser for the Clackamas Community College Foundation. I was, I was able to give a modest donation to their work there. They provide housing and food and scholarships to young people who want to attend the community college and, you know, again, get the training they need to get a good, decent, high-paying job and move up that prosperity ladder. And speaking of prosperity, I did have my first Leadership Advisory Council meeting of our prosperity initiative from the National Association of Counties yesterday, and we taped it, and I am going to re-listen to it myself and colleagues. If you want me to get a copy of what was discussed, I'd be glad to do so for you as well. And then finally, Friday, I'm going to be going to, excuse me, Saturday, I'm going to be going to the Wilsonville Public Works Facility Ribbon Cunning in Wilsonville. And then Friday night, I'm heading out to the Red Carpet Gala at the Oregon Golf Club for our, for our CASAs. And those are the folks that are court-appointed folks who help young people who are in the system work through, and they serve as mentors, and someone who these folks, these young people can talk with. So it helps them get through what they need to get through. So, busy week, and that's the news. I'm like, well, we're gone. Okay, all right.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Scholl, you're up.
Yes, thank you. And good morning, Clackamas County, on this nice spring day. A little bit on transportation and history. In the 1800s, new immigrants to the Oregon Territory braved the Columbia River. It was a very deadly, disastrous place, which is now called Cascade Locks. So the need for a road called the Barlow Trail came about. It was built at the cost, a huge cost of thousands of dollars in those days, and provided the safe way for covered wagons to come over the mountain, across the devil's backbone, just a mile away from the city of Sandy, and across to Oregon City, and then down into the promised land of the Willamette Valley. Thousands of dollars were spent there. And then in the early 1900s, a need for a better road, a road called the Pacific Highway, was built at the cost of millions. And then in the 1950s, after the Eisenhower administration came up with the plan to build highways across our nation, north and south, east and west, we had Interstate 84 and I-5 built at the cost of hundreds of millions of dollars. Now, in 2024, we're looking at projects that are in the billions of dollars. And these projects must be prioritized to bring some sanity to our needs in transportation in Oregon, and in particular, in our region and here in Clackamas County. So the plan for the new Columbia River Crossing to provide a new bridge over the Columbia is estimated to cost somewhere around $6 or $7 billion. The project to build the platform over I-5 at the Rose Quarter is currently estimated at $2 billion. And tolling is being looked at on the current bridge over the Columbia to help pay for the new bridge. Well, if that happens, we know that there's going to be diversion off Interstate 5 onto Now, wouldn't it make sense to complete the expansion of I-205 before we get into a $6 or $7 billion bridge over the Columbia? Shouldn't first things come first? I mean, by building out- I mean, by building out I-205 at the cost of some $400 million to add a new lane each way between Stafford Road and Highway 213 would provide extra capacity and alleviate congestion. So then we could move on to looking at a bridge over the Columbia. And maybe someday, actually being able to prioritize an I-5 Rose Quarter project, which is not really about transportation at all. It's about other social issues. So here we are today. I encourage people to keep the pressure up on Governor Kotek and on ODOT to use some common sense in the prioritization of these major highway projects. And now on voting, I don't think there's been a time in my life where a year seemed to be more critical on voting issues in America at the federal level, the state level, the county level and in some of our city measures. So please, families, pick up the voter pamphlet statement book, sit down with a family, go over it and please get your ballots in. Remember, 21 May is Election Day for the primary. Your ballots must be postmarked by 21 May or in a clerk deposit box by 8:00 PM on the 21st. A few years ago, I was helping the clerk pick up the ballot boxes at 8:00 PM on election night. I saw this woman hobbling across the street to try to make it to the box at about one minute to eight. And she, she made it. But please, people, do not wait to the last second to get your ballots in the box because at 8:00, they are secured. 8:00 on the 21st of May, they're secured. And if your ballot is not in the box, it won't be in the box. Please, don't wait. You can go to the Clackamas County website, clerk's website, and look at ballot box drop sites. Thank you. On law and order, you know, I talk about it all the time, the importance of law and order, 24/7, 365 with no exceptions. And here, just recently, we saw an example of the failure to demand and enforce law and order up at Portland State University at the library. And in just a few days, some 36 people managed to commandeer a state asset, a state facility, and in just a few days, do over $800,000 in damage, steal rare books. And finally, they were all arrested. That arrest could have happened on day one before the $800,000 in damage occurred. So again, I thank our county sheriff and our city police forces for enforcing law and order here in Clackamas County. Clackamas County, a place where committing crime is just a stupid idea. On fire prevention, here we go again. You know, we're going to come up on another year now of warm temperatures and I encourage everybody to look at your property, see what you can do to mitigate wildfire in your area and at your home. And this, on the 19th of May, at Welch's Middle School, the Mount Hood Wildfire Partnership will put on an interactive workshop from 9:00 AM to 1:30 PM. And I encourage you to go to their mounthoodwildfirepartnership.org website and register for that. If you can make it, you'll learn how to reduce the potential for wildfire on your property. And with that, I would say to everyone in Clackamas County and people who are in the region, take some time this weekend to visit Clackamas County. We find people from the city wanting to come here and get away and enjoy the lakes, rivers, our parks. North Clackamas County Parks and Recreation District are some 15 or 16 Clackamas County Parks, Timberline Lodge, and there's just a lot to do here. So come down and, and take a tour through the forest lands of Clackamas County and look at those wild rhododendrons that are in bloom now. And with that, I wish everybody a good day.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. On piggybacking on Commissioner Schrader's comments regarding the art for the new courthouse, that is not being paid for by your tax dollars, you'd be happy to know. We get lottery money every year. We can use it at discretion and so we set aside some lottery funds to pay for art. And this first go-around of artwork was selected by a Clackamas County artist and you'll find it to be remarkable. It's going to be held up high because when you walk in to the new courthouse, there's ceilings and you can see up. This one piece is 54 feet long. And the secondary piece that goes below it is about 30 feet long, if I'm remembering that right. So it's quite astonishing. I think you will find it very pleasing to the eye and it depicts Clackamas County accurately. Regarding the Main Street Courthouse Commissioners, as you notice on your green sheet, that will be up for discussion in June, at which time we will decide on a couple of things. There's a couple of good ideas how to go about this and I'm really interested in hearing. We'll be reaching out to community members, setting up a committee probably be the best way to do it. We approved a design for the Clackamas Village and that will be next to the Veterans Village. It will house 24 pods. We're moving ahead on that to take care of single people who are homeless in Clackamas County. Budget week is fast approaching, the week after next, and as you know, we have the five commissioners and then five volunteers from the community who help us. I met with the five volunteers privately in my office this week to go over budget concerns. I like to do that. We have a new budget committee member and she was full of questions. She was quite delightful and very, I think, qualified to serve on the budget committee. And the budget is a fluid document. It's pretty much the same, but there are some aberrations, you know, every year as we do it. So I just like to talk to the budget committee people because they're out in the community and then they bring in ideas and it was just a real good conversation. We also, last week, last Thursday, had the State of the County hosted by the North Clackamas County Chamber at the Monarch Hotel. It was well-attended. Commissioners each got to have, I think, an ample opportunity to speak what we're working on from the past and what we hope to accomplish for the future. I also attended the same evening, a fundraiser for Northwest Family Services. They provide assistance and we, as a nonprofit to families, actually across the region, Clackamas County does support them on that. And as you know, this is a very busy time for all of us and I'm actually looking forward to the budget because, Gary, it's going to be a downtime. And, and I've been reading through the budget book and hopefully all commissioners have and we are in very good shape. In fact, we're a little bit better shape than I thought. So if you add up contingencies, reserves and beginning fund balance, we have cash on hand of $110 million. And I don't know of any other organization that has that percentage of cash available to maintain for, if hard times come or if we have an emergency to care for. So I'm very happy with that. Seeing no further business before this commission, we are adjourned.